Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here tonight representing the Public Art Committee, which is very excited to present to you a new piece of art, a new piece of public art that is proposed for the southern part of the BART station parking lot. At least, that's the closest location that I can think of right now. So I'm just going to give you a really quick summary of the art component of the project, and then I'm going to introduce you to Siddh Mahindru, who you've seen before from SCFM. His team is coordinating with the artist Kinematics Lab, and they also have a presentation for you. And then, also wanted to mention that we have the Vice Chair of the Public Art Committee in the audience, Susan Loria. And then, also for any of your engineering questions, Mike Moran and Farsonay Sanders are here. So I'm just going to present to you a brief summary of the Public Art Committee's review of this proposal. So as you know, this has come before the City Council before, and you approved the design contracts for the Town Center 3 BART pathway and bike station project in April of 2018. And then, in July 2018, the City Council allocated $30,000 to the selected artist Kinematics Lab for schematic design with the direction to return to council once the design is complete. So that's what we're doing here today. The schematic design is complete. The artists have come before the Public Art Committee two times now, once in January and once in March. The Public Art Committee is very supportive of this project. They really like it. They reviewed the full-scale model that is outside on the crane, that hopefully all of you got a chance to look at prior to the meeting. And so, one of the questions that the Council had was, is this project feasible? Can it be done for a total of $230,000, which is what we have to work with? And SCFM and the artists are confident that they can produce this piece of public work for that budget. And so, as you'll recall, the budget of $230,000 actually comes, will be, the cost of this whole public art will be covered by Public Art In-Lu fees from Woodbury Highlands, which is the new development behind the Veterans Hall. They've committed $230,000 specifically to this project, and I included that agreement, which is also in your council packet. So this will eventually be paid for by Art In-Lu fees 100 percent. We just don't have them now. So the $30,000 that's going towards the schematic design, the city is fronting until we get money from Woodbury. So we expect $115,000, which is half of the money that they've committed, to come in around August, and then the other half would come in when a building permit is issued during final inspection. So you would still be fronting money for a period of time before 100 percent of the cost is covered. So the overall cost estimate for the entire project, which includes the pedestrian pathways, the public art element, the bike station project, is $1.47 million. That doesn't include the $230,000, which is the public art portion of that. And so, tonight, the Public Art Committee is asking you to approve the schematic design as you, as you, as you ask for, for the dandelion seeds as submitted or with conditions, and then to authorize an additional professional services agreement with Kinematics Lab so that they can continue to work with the engineering team to develop the whole project. And so, as you'll recall, it's, it's important in this project that the artist participates from the beginning all the way through the project in order, in order to, in order to just, Siddh can explain this much better than I can, so that they are integrated, so that the art is integrated into the, the total project. So then, the other part of the recommendation would be to provide some additional money for the, for this fiscal year in 1819, and then some more money in fiscal year 1920. So that would be 50, $50,000 this year and another $150,000 for the next fiscal year. And then, to adjust the Public Art Sinking Fund to reflect that advance of funds. And so, Siddh, can you give us your summary and presentation? Thank you.
You got to be closer to the microphone. There you go. I don't know if it's, Siddh, check and see if the button is on. It should be a little red light.
Good evening.
There we go.
Everyone, I'm Siddh Mahindru, SCFM Design Studio, and I have with me David Cole with Kinematics Design. We have the rest of the team as well. I'm very pleased to come today because, trying to see if I can raise this, because I think we have fulfilled, we more than fulfilled, the challenge that you gave us. It was a challenge because the, the art is not something that is separate from what we're doing. And because it's not separate, we had to develop all areas of the design and the constraints we're working, as you all know, the constraints of East Bay mud, the water lines, and all of that. Because the, in order to assure you and us that we can achieve this dramatic piece, which is a center point of our whole composition, you can say, of the space, how people come from the BART station, what do they see when they come out of the tunnel, so to speak, and face south, and what do they see when they start walking down the steps, and how we lead them to, to the downtown. It, it's such an integral part that we had to develop all these parts, and in order for us to give you the assurance that this art piece that we're sharing with you and, and can be achieved for the, for the budget we have. And just, so finally to summarize it, and I'm going to let David explain it, we had to actually take it. We are beyond schematic design, wouldn't you say that? Usually, we wouldn't, at schematic design stage, we wouldn't actually have the pieces constructed and all the details worked out. So, so I think we are, we are very confident. So with that, I want to just quickly walk you through the layout, some, some of the slight changes from what you had seen before, and they have to do with how, how we worked the various elements and the constraints. I mean, this is really an obstacle course here, with so many different things happening in the easements and so on, the pipes. We've actually created the, the artwork, the framework, the four poles are not a square, but they are a rectangle. That's because we want, we had to elongate it in the north-south direction and not in the east-west direction. They still line up with when you come out of the BART station, so that's number one. And the height of it, so if we go to this cross-section, you will see that we are well outside the constraints that East Bay mud had, had posed at us, which gave us the sort of, it created additional challenge, because the further the poles got meant that the, the supporting structure, the web, steel web that we're creating, had to get longer. And so, that's why we wanted to, but we didn't want it to become a dominant piece, because the dominant pieces are the pieces that are hanging from the web and not the web itself. So all of that has been worked out now. That's the scale of it. We have 15, David, am I stealing your show?
No, no.
Okay. We have 15 pieces, and maybe I'll let you describe the, how they all will behave, as, as you were passionately describing outside. So they're about 50 feet in the east-west direction, 65 feet in the north-south direction. They're independent, of course, of each other, and this is, of course, Juliette has already summarized. So with that, David, I want, should I leave it at this? You, you want to add to?
Sure.
To how we were able to make the wire, that was a big challenge, is the net, because we put a constraint on the artists and their engineers, that we do not want the scale of the, the web to dominate, because, and the same thing was, was brought up by the, by the Public Art Committee at our first meeting, that we wanted the cables to be not too fat, so to speak, because they will take away. And, and we wanted the, the joints to be more refined. Some people even use the example of the artwork in this building, in the library, that perhaps if, if one were to look back, this piece should have had a little better refinement in how the pieces are hung. So with that, I turn it over to you, David.
Hi. Thank you very much for hearing us out. So you understand this is a kinetic piece, so the idea is that the piece responds to its environment, so it's not static. Each one of these dandelion seeds moves on several different axes, and if you look at it kind of from a horizontal line, there's a 16-foot clearance from the ground, and that is to guarantee that fire trucks or other emergency vehicles could get under there easily. So the bottom of the lowest seed pod would be 18 feet, so that's a two-foot clearance, and then there'd be about four feet of difference between the lowest and the highest. So the idea is that, that these, these dandelion seeds have just kind of drifted in, and we want it to feel kind of poetic. We want them to move with the wind, and they won't all be moving in the same way. It's really a dynamic piece that will kind of cast shadows, and you can see even from the one out there, that with the, the kind of winds that we had today, it was always alive, and it was animated. Each of these is hand-formed from stainless steel, so it's using traditional kind of silversmithing techniques to hammer them up. So they're all individual pieces, and based on just the variations within weight and shape, they'll hang a little more horizontally or a little more vertically than the one next to them. And, and we think this will really capture this kind of buoyant, natural, beautiful kind of concept that, that we want to convey with this project. As Siddh mentioned, you know, it's all going to be hanging, nice, there it is. It'll be hanging, the entire suspension system will be from cables, really no thicker than this pen, a quarter-inch cable. The entire thing is stainless steel. It's been thoroughly engineered. We have our engineer here. RBHU is, is his company, and he's worked with artists before, because we wanted someone who could really, I mean, when we've seen his analysis, it's incredibly sophisticated, but he's also allowed us to create a, a piece that has artistic integrity, which has been very important to us. All the components have been engineered in, in many layers of, of kind of safety. It's, again, stainless steel, all like wash-down kind of criterion for its selection, and, and we believe that the piece will be very durable, but still elegant and beautiful. And I think a lot of the mechanisms are kind of hidden to allow the pieces just to be what they are.
I just wanted to add that the, we are using the poles not just for the art, but these are also going to have lights that are going to provide the required light levels at this, in this plaza area and the pedestrian area around them, as well as spot, discreet spots, spotlights that will light the artwork at night.
I guess one thing we really think about, like, the experience of the, the viewers, right, the pedestrians, the people that will be seeing this, and thinking about them coming out from the, the BART tunnel, and they will be almost horizontal with these. And then, as they move down the stairs, like, their relationship to this piece will kind of transform as they see it from a different perspective, but it will also be visible even down the street, and I think that it will really create a signature identity for this place and for the city of Lafayette. That is something that, that we think you'll be really proud of, because it will be an original piece, I think reflective of the environment and this location, and just the kind of spirit of, like, imagination and joyfulness that, that we are trying to reflect in this.
Do you have questions, or I don't know?
Yeah, happy to answer questions.
Okay. Are there questions? Councilmember Berg.
Sure. Thank you very much, both of you. And, Anish, I promised to be easy on you tonight. Thanks, thanks very much for coming back. Just a few questions on the, and it's a beautiful piece. I really, I commend you, and.
Thank you.
And thanks for your, it's, it's very genuine, your interest in making it a signature piece for our community, and it's, I appreciate that. Just a few questions on, on the costs. The additional $50,000 and $150,000, can you just explain again what, what those, what those figures are for, and I'm, I'm sorry if I missed it in the.
I think that was about the timing, right, when the first 50, and then?
Yeah, so, um, we've been going back and forth on how we want to continue financing this project so that it can move forward. So the contract that we have with Kinematics Lab right now will be complete as, as of the end of this council meeting, and they would, they will have fulfilled their, their work that we've asked them to do for the $30,000. And so, in order for them to come, to, to participate further in, in the engineering and the, and the whole project, we need a way, we need a way to pay them, so we would need to have.
The fronting of the money?
This is the, yes, this is the fronting of the next set of money, so we would need another professional services agreement with them, indicating all the different steps in the project that they would need to be working on, along with a dollar amount, because right now, after this meeting, we won't have a contract with them.
Okay, okay, understood. Thank you. And so, the entire, the, the total price is $230,000. What if it comes in at $380,000?
If, if I could address this, I mean, this, we've, Michael and I have been working on projects together for over 10 years. We have certainly had the experience of unanticipated things, but in this case, and it's a rare example, to spend $30,000 to thoroughly vet this whole thing. In most art situations, oh, and I should point out that in any case, we've always had to foot the bill. We can never take a second bite of the apple, so that's just a given. But it's, it's been a special thing to have this money so that we could get budget items confirmed from every vendor, to make an actual piece, to have it thoroughly engineered. So we are confident that we can meet this, and if it, there are any cost overruns, that comes out of our end.
Okay, that, that's the only question I'm, I believe, I believe you. I'm just trusting, verifying. I don't want to put the taxpayers or expose the taxpayers to additional monies that, I know we have a not-to-exceed piece in here on that. In terms, just two more quick questions, if I may. In terms of, you talked about the durability, which is great. So recurring maintenance costs annually, what, what would you expect the city to have to pay to ensure that this piece remains in its condition that, that you would want it to?
I think there's perhaps a, a two-part component. One would just be a visual inspection of the piece, and we'd recommend that happens every year. I think that's just a, a common safety thing that you'd have to do to something like this. And we talked about that, that the cables might, there's turnbuckles, there's five turnbuckles at each of the posts at the top that would take up any tension, and it would be natural over time for the cables to slightly stretch out. And so, we could determine how much stretch has occurred by measuring from the center down to the ground. We'll know what that was like when it was installed. And it's, it's, we would want to initially inspect that to see if it changes, then we'd take up play in the cables. So we believe that every year, there should be a visual inspection to see if it is sinking, or, you know, if it is changing. And if it were, that could be taken up with these turnbuckles.
And you would do that?
I don't know how that would work with the city. I think that, you know, I, like, I don't know whether we'd be a contractor, whether we can do that. We think that the city, I mean, in our proposal, it seemed like that would be something that the city could undertake as part of its public works. Is that correct?
I don't think we've gotten that far, but we have talked about the city taking on, I believe.
So I'm, I'm, I love the piece. I think it's, I think it's awesome. I think, I think it'll do tremendous things for, for our city, but I mean, it's, it's prudence that dictates us to ask the question, how much is this going to cost a taxpayer to maintain? And I think, I think that the, the committee might want to look into that, and I commend the committee, they've done a fantastic job here, but if we're gonna, if we're gonna assume, you know, a, a large dollar figure, or, you know, it, the, the public deserves to, to know about that.
I, I think, Mike, Mike's going to address this.
Okay, thanks.
So what was just described, basically an annual inspection and, and taking some tension out, or, you know, there would be some natural stretch over time, that wouldn't be a huge cost. I mean, that'd be, it'd be basically probably an electrical contractor type of person that has a bucket truck. At the same time, we would clean the lights, or inspect the lights, or change the bulbs, so that's just kind of standard maintenance. You know, the whole thing itself, I think it's anticipated, the city is going to take maintenance responsibility of not just this art piece, but possibly some pavers and some other things. You know, it's, it's no different than us adding medians somewhere else, and now it's our responsibility, possibly even the, the little bit of landscaping that is around this, similar to we have landscaping at Happy Valley Road at the end of this parking lot that, that we take care of. So every time we add more, it's just more maintenance, and, you know, after a while, we're going to need, you know, one more maintenance person a year just to keep status quo, so that's certainly something to consider every time we add something. But this does not seem, given the stainless steel components and the way it's constructed, I don't anticipate it being a high-maintenance item.
Okay, I appreciate that, and definitely have faith in, in your assessment, Mr. Moran. I would, I was going to mention the same thing. We, we are in an unfunded situation when it comes to core area maintenance, so I would just put that in the back of your head. If I may, my second question actually had to do with the actual project, which is referenced here, and I was going to ask Mr. Moran a question around that, if that's okay. And we had, we had the, the pleasure to speak earlier this morning, I just want to verify, how many parking spots in the south lot of, of the BART lot there are we going to lose based on this project, not the art project, the overall project?
19 spaces.
Okay. Do we know 19 out of how many?
Like 118, or 100, they have 120, I think, that are numbered, but I think it's really only 118 that are used, or one of them might be like a motorcycle-sized space.
Okay. Are they permitted spots, or are they first come, first served, pay?
So some are permitted, so they have two or three layers of, from like 6:00 to 10:00 a.m. is one thing, and from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. is another thing, and after 3:00 is free for all these spots. And that's actually different for the north side versus the south side. So you have a, a plethora of options there.
So would.
Some are permitted, and some are, you know, you pay it during this time.
Would we have to then reduce the number of permits? Who's going to lose out on this, punitively? I mean, who's going to have to give up their permits? Or is that a scenario?
I, I don't know that that's a scenario. There's far more parking spaces on the north side of this parking lot that, that have those same hours and, and requirements.
Okay. I, you know, we all know the, the crisis we're under in terms of parking in our BART lot, and it's not all, all of our citizens that park there. It's people come from all over the place and park, park in the Lafayette Park parking lot. And I love the art element. This is separate from the art element. I'll repeat what I repeated whenever it was, several, several months ago. I, I'm very, very concerned and, and actually not in favor of losing any spots in our BART parking lot at all, because BART is by no means ever going to deliver more parking spots. If they do anything, they'll just build over them. So I, I just want to, I want to say that on the record again, that I don't generally approve of the way that this project was constructed. I did vote for it out of the general, out of the general means for it, associated specifically with the art element, but it gives me great trouble to understand that we're going to lose almost 20 spots, and that is going to come to the detriment of many, many workers that live in our town, that depend on taking public transport into the city or, or elsewhere, and they're going to end up driving, and they're going to end up clogging our freeways and, and all of that. So I just wanted to make mention of that on the record. Thank you.
Right, welcome. Other questions or comments? Yes, Vice Mayor Kandell.
To follow up on Cam's questions, which are valid, valid questions, what about liability in terms of, I think Mike needs to hear this. Hey, so what about liability? I mean, this is a suspended structure, right? So going along the, what is the city liable if the thing falls, or one of the dandelions blows off? I'm just, I'm just asking, just for, so we know.
That's a good question, and I thought of the same thing. So the city has liability insurance through Municipal Pulling Authority, MPA, and I believe that the, it's a, it's a question that we asked similarly when there was, there's a similar suspended art piece just right out here, the book pages. So it's the same issue. I think that, you know, if we have it regularly inspected and we do what we need to do, if something were to happen, obviously, that would not be good for the person it happened to, but the city does have a high li, has liability insurance through the MPA. And so, I would be, I think we can send this concept to them and just, you know, do a double check that this is something that would be covered.
Perfect.
It would be, you know, we've got streetlights, we've got a lot of stuff that's overhead.
And, and those are all, you know, ruled over by, but they're, they're.
And it would be covered, but I can double check, and I would do that for my own peace of mind as well.
Okay. I do have a second question. The emergency vehicles, and it's great, it's high, they can go through, because that's the turnaround there. Do, did Confire weigh in on this at all? They did. Okay, could, we, because, let me know what their concerns were.
Thank you. We had a meeting with the fire department and fire chief, and they had certain requirement. They asked us to install Ballard per their standard so they can get in the cul-de-sac area. They, and the radius of the cul-de-sac remain as is. That was part of the agreement they had with the subdivision, and that's one of the main reasons we are not touching that back area. So they are okay with our project.
And so, the height of this thing, if they had to, because I'm seeing where it is, the structure, they don't imagine having to get an emergency vehicle in there that would have an extension on it. They weren't concerned about that at all? Like, this wasn't going to limit their access? Okay, that, thank you.
No, because they would get in the back, in the cul-de-sac area, and that's where, if they have to raise their boom or their ladder, that's the area they would.
But that, that turnaround area is really far from the station, right? And so, I'm thinking about, this thing is closer to the station, and so if the emergency was close to the station, they would, maybe would want to stop near here or under this.
Well, the parking area, they can stop at the west end of the turnaround, and otherwise, if, to get access to where the subdivision is or anywhere, then they go into the cul-de-sac area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Geringer.
So I had a question, but it'll probably feed into your question. So we, Mike and I, I'm sorry, Mayor Anderson and I are members of the Public Art Committee, so we did see the presentation and did offer some feedback at that time. As part of the maintenance, and Mike can get more into the actual materials and dirt and things like that, but in terms of that, annual, is it, I think it was in the proposal, anticipated that any cleaning of it would be done annually during that timeframe, and so birds, dirt, I mean, not birds, what comes out of birds and dirt. Hopefully, birds don't.
I, I think it's, that certainly, if, if it started to appear unsightly in any way, that during that annual period, they could be pressure washed. I mean, there's only 15 of them. It, they're totally stable and designed for that kind of, of thing, and I would imagine it would take maybe 15 minutes per piece, something like that, 20 minutes per piece, and I think that would be a reasonable way to do it.
And Mike, that's your thinking as well?
I believe so. I think the easiest way would be to pressure wash those. We have to contain and vac the water, but that's fairly easily done, and, and you would do that probably with, again, a bucket truck or, you know, some sort of lift.
If I may add, the, this is sort of somewhat.
If I may add, the, this is sort of somewhat similar to a lot of the screens you see, especially nowadays, on buildings, whether they are art pieces or not. There are screens, perforated metal screens that are used for, in parking structures, and so on, so forth. What we found in, in other projects is that cleaning those is actually much harder than these, because they have, when you pressure wash those, you have the fear that you're, you're likely, you have to do it very carefully, because you might damage the surface right behind it. That is not the case, and, and so this is fairly easy compared to other installations.
Okay, other questions? Councilmember Bliss, no, nothing?
Nope.
All right. I guess we'll ask, are there any public comments on this? Anything from our Public Art Committee? Yep, come on down. Why don't you come down and speak in the microphone?
Regarding the- Hello?
Yeah.
Regarding the overhead concern that you have regarding liability, we're using code values to engineer this art piece, and we will be stamping the drawing and calculation packages. So if there's any negligent, we also have, based on the requirement, the insurances to cover. Just so you're aware, anything that is overhead by billing code, we have to use over, a safety factor of five to one, which is very secure and safe.
So you're, so you're our liability.
If there is negligent engineering, absolutely.
Okay, I like this. Speak into the microphone, please.
This is Ali, who is part of this special schematic design process that you put the money forward, so that we could hire an engineer the best that we could find, and highly recommended to, to come up with this, so we're not selling a pig in the poke. This is something that is like, been figured out.
Okay, excellent. All right, any public comment? Any comment from the Public Art Committee? Why don't you come on down to the microphone? We just want to get you on record. Please do, take your time.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that when this concept was introduced, we asked a lot of probing questions, and we asked them about timelines and, and models and drawings. And we were so thrilled that they delivered on time. We were late. The committee had a harder time meeting and getting everyone's calendars together. That doesn't happen often, but it did happen on this occasion. But instead of a, a model made from a material that wasn't being used, we had an actual replica. We had the real deal. And they brought their truck. It's nuanced, it's beautiful. It is really sensational, and I have been involved in the arts for 20 to 30 years. And you usually get a project out of foam core or modeling clay. You don't get the welded, nuanced, polished object that we got to see. And I hope you all appreciate that that's, that's a wonderful thing when you're embarking on a project like that. And then with Kinematics Lab doing that, they had a much better sense of what the costs will be. So I think we're, as, as a member of the Art Committee, we're feeling very good about this project moving forward and doing right by the community of Lafayette.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, I will bring it back to the council for discussion and a decision, a motion? What, what have we? Councilmember Bliss?
You ready to say something?
Nope, I mean, I, I-
No?
I, I mean, I would just chime in, and I mean, no, I mean, I, all I was gonna add was, I mean, most of what's, what I was gonna express, I think, has been expressed already. I think the concerns about ongoing maintenance are valid, so I appreciate those questions being raised. And certainly liability is a, is a great point to raise. I, I'm really excited about this project. I mean, I think it's, you know, we, I was at a, the Friends of the Library annual meeting earlier today, and got to hear Narup give her State of the City address, where she talked about this broader gateway project on the south side of the BART station is what it meant for the city, and what it could mean for people arriving here, and how it creates a sense of space, and a sense of arriving somewhere. As someone who selfishly rides BART every day, I look forward to having this be a feature of our city. I think the concerns that have been raised are, are good questions to bear in mind, and certainly for us to discuss. But, but I really, two things I want to call out in particular. I appreciate the work, obviously, the artists and the full team. I want to, in particular acknowledge the work of the Public Art Committee and staff with all the due diligence that went into this. And particularly, I really appreciate the comment that was made about having the ability to invest the dollars upfront to really model out and get real cost estimates on this, so that we knew that what we were dealing with were real dollars and real estimates, that the city wouldn't then be on the hook for later. I think was really important, and something that I hope as we move forward as a council, and other councils beyond this one in the future, will bear in mind as, as a valuable sort of model in terms of thinking about how to invest money upfront to make sure that we don't have cost overruns.
Well, if I may, really that, the credit for that goes to Councilmember Burks, who insisted that this be the process we follow. And it just unfolded into a very thorough and complete process, so that's, it's good all around.
And thanks for that additional information, so I might want to acknowledge that, that thinking by, by Councilmember Burks for having that be part of the, part of the upfront, 'cause I think it really has clearly made the process go well. And I think be, from what I gathered from the comments, be a very gratifying one for the artists and for the team as well. That's all I have.
Okay, that's our Burks.
I'd be happy to move all four elements of the recommendation, the staff's recommendation, unless you'd like me to read all four of them.
I don't think you have to read them. You're moving the recommendation, staff recommendation.
Second.
You have a second? Okay, we have a second. Is there any further discussion or thoughts?
Sure, yeah, I do. And I, and I know this maybe more mimics what Councilmember Burks was speaking about earlier. This is the first time I've looked at this from council. I did look at it when I was on transportation. And, and I do thank you for making the square thing now a circle, for dropping people off, 'cause that just makes sense safety-wise. I appreciate that quite a bit. And I know I wasn't involved with the process with this very much at all, but I just, I, I still don't get this project. I'm sorry. I, I know people get it, and some people, and some people don't, and I'm one of the people that just, they don't. It has nothing to do with the art. I think the art is super cool, and I think we will use this, if not right there, then somewhere on this project. I think the, the dandelions are very nice. But to lose the 19 spaces, and then have this like weird walkway through an existing roadway that's still the turnaround, it's just, I don't know, I don't. And having public art over where cars are dropping people off. You know, I like it where people are walking, you know? I like it where the people are, and they can walk underneath them, and then they can see them from below. I know that the people are dropping cars off. And so I, I'm all for a beautiful entry to the city, and for a cool walkway, and lights, and dandelions, and everything. But I still don't understand this two-circle, losing parking spaces concept. I just, I, I don't, I don't get it. I'm sorry.
You don't have to apologize.
Yes.
Okay, well, I certainly support the motion, and we'll call the question. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Say no? Okay, we have one opposed, Vice Mayor Candell. All others are yeses. And that gives us all of the recommendations, which includes the start of your next piece of contract work, okay? So thank you very much for taking the time and bringing the, the dandelion here. So we could see it. Okay, with that, wow, where are we now? Okay, that brings us to staff reports, and interim city manager.
Good evening, mayor and council members. This is a continuation of our discussions on the housing bills. At your last meeting, you endorsed the Public Managers Association's letters with amendments, and that went to mayor's conference. There was quite a robust debate that evening with Senator Glaser and Assemblywoman Bauerke in attendance. Though the PMA letter was modified at the meeting, and a copy of the modified letter, now representing all of Contra Costa, is attached. I also obtained a draft letter on 1487, if you recall. This is the bill that would create another governance layer, which Contra Costa cities opposed. We started off opposing, supporting with amendments, but we were told by our electeds in Sacramento that we should come out more strongly opposing it, so we kind of flipped the language. I'm not sure where this draft letter stands. At this point, it's draft. I don't know whether this is the final version, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention. The third aspect of this task was to, or the second aspect, was to, to adopt the Contra Costa housing framework through a resolution, and each individual city would do that. And then we would have the ability to work off of these concepts and develop our own legislative platforms. In that regard, Townsend is working on drafting a legislative platform for Lafayette. The Townsend reps met with the mayor about a month ago, and has just today sent me a draft, which I shall, will be bringing to you. So this evening, staff is recommending that you adopt a resolution which supports the Contra Costa housing framework. And that, that's the extent of, of staff's recommendation this evening. To bring you quickly up to speed on other housing issues, the firm of Townsend is trying to schedule a meeting with the mayor, and the mayors of the Tri-Valley cities, and Senator Chu, and Assemblymember, Assemblymember Chu?
Yeah, Assemblymember Chu.
Assemblymember Chu, and Assemblymember Bauerke, to talk about 1487. And that meeting should take place either this week or the next. So that's where that stands. SB 50 was before Senate Appropriations Committee, but really to talk about the fiscal impacts to the state. And I'm waiting for the information from Townsend. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay, are there any questions for staff? Vice Mayor Candell.
Yeah, hi. In the policy letter, I know we had comments that night, and some were from our now mayor, and I didn't see him in that policy.
Well, this is some, some, what happens when you, there's a vote by committee?
Right.
I think the mayor's comments were reflected, and I'll point it out.
Okay, please, I mean-
Let me get to it.
I think it's four.
Yeah, four has exemption.
Yeah.
That's, okay, that's all I was-
Number four, actually combined two concepts, that there could not be any exemptions, and that the statewide legislation shouldn't apply to specific-
Good, making sure that was right, okay. And you're, and you were okay with that?
Well, I am okay with that, and I think the wording here is interesting, because it really says, in terms of four, nor exempt select set of communities.
Yes.
Because there are exemptions that may come into play on SB 50-
Correct.
-that we would want to take advantage of, such as the wildfire hazard.
Yes.
So the wording here, I think, gives us still that-
Right.
-possibility, but gets our point across, that there shouldn't be areas that suddenly are not in anymore.
Yeah, and it's a reference really to the SB 50, to Senator McGuire joining forces-
Yes.
-and the exemption of counties of 600,000 and fewer.
Right, yeah, perfect, okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Are there questions? Yes?
Just a question on, on the Townsend firm, since it was raised. How do you, how do you feel so far they are doing representing the interests of our community?
We've had them on board for a month, and so far, it's really been, they've come and met with staff and the mayor for about two hours to understand our legislative platform. And subsequent, and we really, I think the mayor did a great job of identifying the high fire hazard zones. Now, it may have been a concept that was, or concern shared by other communities, but shortly thereafter, there were exemptions given to SB 50. So I'm going to take, give the mayor partial credit for those exemptions.
What a city manager. What a-
They are, have been very good telling us, keeping, telling me on a weekly basis what's going on. But, and so so far, I have been pleased with their services.
Okay, I, I mean, I, I think they've done a good job in keeping us informed, which is, which is outstanding. We're paying them a lot of money, though, and I think that we could go to a number of different mediums to understand what's going on in Sacramento. I guess my, my question is sort of more sharply directed at, when are they gonna be in Sacramento influencing the legislative process as time ticks here? And we've got hundreds of bills that may impact our city. And when are they gonna start persuading lawmakers to consider amendments, at least to bills, or considering killing bills that will hurt our community? When are they gonna start doing that? There are lobbyists.
There are, yes. A good question. They are working on, they have been working on SB 50 even before we joined them as a, as a city. And there have been amendments to SB 50, not to the extent that we would like, but it's better than what it started out with. Secondly, they are working really hard on 1487, which was another bill of concern to us, the regional government. They're doing that. They, I know the mayor has, we've talked about addressing the redevelopment issue and the reimbursements to the city, so I know that they have started working on that. But I will say, just looking at the whole process, we probably got on board a little late in this legislative year. The true test will be, what do they do before a bill gets introduced? Or how do we influence when a bill is being drafted? I think that would be an important-
Okay, I know, I know you'll, knowing you, I know you'll do this. Please hold their feet to the fire and demand service that we're paying for. And I certainly hope that Assemblymember Chu will actually listen and have dialogue, like he did not do when he co-sponsored the BART bill.
Correct. Thank you, and I will certainly keep on top of it.
Okay, other questions? Vice Mayor Candell.
On that same note, is, are they going to give advice on how our citizens or citizens groups can also get engaged? I mean, not just for us, but if they need letters written, you know, or groups of people to be writing letters? Are they going to help us and tell us who should be writing letters when, and, you know, to whom?
They should, that is part of their responsibility, but I will probe further. And have them send templates if they've drafted them.
That'd be great.
Other questions? Councilmember Bliss?
Yeah, thank you. I had a question. First of all, a comment, I appreciate the edits and the changes that you pointed out that were made at the mayor's conference, and just want to commend the mayor for representing us at that convening, and for carrying our concerns forward in a way that I thought was really impactful, and helped improve the letter and the policy framework. My question goes to, it's kind of picking up on Councilmember Burks' question, in a sense, which is, the relation, so there's this broader policy framework that's contained in here. And I know one of the background documents goes into some detail about, for some of the different pieces of legislation, sort of what sort of amendments might be desirable under this sort of regional policy framework, right? And so there's a number of amendments there, but I would, I would expect from the way you describe it that what Townsend will be helping us craft is a, is a legislative agenda or strategy that's specific to Lafayette, or to, I would imagine, groups of clients like theirs that are in similar situation to ours. And I guess I'm looking to find out whether the amendments that are listed in that really detailed table in one of the documents, does that in any way, if we sign- detailed table in one of the documents, does that in any way, if we sign on to that, does that in any way constrain us in terms of the actual amendments that Townsend might ultimately try to carry forward as part of their contract with us? In other words, and I honestly don't know, do we get ourselves in any way sideways or limited in what we can do by signing on for those broader set of amendments? Because I want to make sure that we're really positioning ourselves to make sure that what we push through with Townsend are going to be amendments that'll actually address our concerns. And also, really importantly, that would be viewed as credible amendments as part of the deliberations going forward.
I think that's a very good point. What we, what you have before you is a county-wide set of concerns, and we may have concerns that are more unique to us. I think we can easily add a sentence in the resolution that says that Lafayette is, or the city council may take positions that are more focused and to Lafayette. While we support the framework in concept, there may be issues that, where we may take a different position.
Okay. So it's sort of like just maintaining our local control?
Yes.
Arguing for local control?
Local, yeah.
Okay. Right. I would just want to stipulate that, just clearly in our, in what we agree upon here, just because I think there might be places, because we do have a BART stop, not every, not every city does, where we might need to make moves that aren't exactly identical to what's listed in the policy framework that would be advantageous to us as a city.
And Townsend has seen this documentation, haven't they?
I believe they were involved.
Yeah.
Quite closely.
So I, hopefully that's, there's a coordination there. I think that's a good amendment for the resolution.
Yeah.
But hopefully that's part of the coordination we're buying, is we have our own, and then we have this overall general.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions? Councilmember Geringer.
So Naru, you received Townsend's Lafayette-specific recommendations today, and we'll see that at the next meeting?
I, I don't know what condition it is. I haven't opened the email. So I'd like to look at it and make sure that it actually reflects what we talked about with the mayor. And if it looks ready to come to you, I will bring it to you at that time.
And so Townsend has been very involved with working with the Tri.
Tri-Valley.
Tri-Valley, writing all of this material and doing all of this analysis. And one thing that, this is more a statement, I guess, than a, a question, but I was curious if they were also the ones who came forward with the recommendation that was brought to the mayor's conference on the support unless amended? Because as we went around that whole discussion, that was questionable. I thought Cindy Silva hit it kind of out of the park right away, saying that that was not something that you would ever do. And then, of course, both of our legislators then listened as long as they could and stood up and said, no, you know, don't do this. So I think the playing on Councilmember Burke's and Councilmember Bliss, and probably everyone who hasn't said it yet, just that we have to be very engaged in this process as well. We are paying them money, but it is really very much about us stepping back and saying, does that really work for Lafayette? And does that really make sense? And when we think maybe it doesn't, we need to question that, so.
Absolutely.
A comment, but, and thank you for all that you're doing, because I know that this, you know, takes a lot of time, and we're focused very much on a couple of bills, and there are a whole bunch of them that, you know, we're looking at as well, so.
Correct.
Okay. So that's, any other questions? And any public comment on this? Okay, so we have the recommendation to adopt Resolution 2019-23, Proving Contra Costa's Jurisdictions, Housing, and Policy Framework. So we have a modification to that resolution.
Yes, I was just going to say.
I'm just pointing that out, but I'll leave that to the maker of the motion. Would anyone like to move this item?
So I liked, I am ready to move that, and I liked, Councilmember Bliss is saying that we want to maintain local control. So do we, in order to pass this, need to have that exact language before us as Resolution number something?
You could direct staff to make the amendment, and I can run it by the mayor, to see if he's satisfied with it.
I think it's going to be fairly simple.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think so too.
So I think if that's acceptable, we can do that, we can move this along.
Yes. So I am willing to make that motion.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
A second.
And I have a second. Any further discussion? Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good work on this.
Thank you.
More to come. Okay, with that, we move on to public hearings, and we're going to talk about flavored tobacco.
Your subject is not sure.
Yes. Don't look too close.
Oh. I don't think I put it. I didn't. I tried to. All right.
Good evening, councilmembers. Am I ready to start?
We're ready to start, and I can't quite hear you, so make sure you talk a little closer to the microphone.
Sure. Yes.
Anytime you're ready, go ahead.
Good evening, councilmembers. At the meeting on March 11, the council approved the policy options that were presented by staff. At the council's direction, staff has prepared Ordinance 675, which I would like to read by title. In Ordinance 1, repealing LMC Chapter 5.5, Restrictions on Advertising, Access and Promotion of Tobacco Products to Minors. 2, repealing certain sections of 5.3 Smoking. And 3, adding a new chapter, 5.9, entitled Tobacco Retailer Licensing and Restrictions on Sales of Tobacco and Flavored Tobacco Products. A summary of the ordinance has been provided as a part of the staff report. Few highlights of the ordinance. Tobacco retailers' license will be required for all persons engaging in the sale of tobacco, tobacco products, and tobacco paraphernalia. Self-service displays and free samples are prohibited. Price must be displayed. Coupons and discount cannot be redeemed to purchase tobacco products. Only onsite sales will be allowed. That means no mobile wending. Packaging and labeling has to be original and conforming to federal standards. And per California law, tobacco products cannot be sold to individuals over 21 years of age. If the age is 20, if the age is under 27, they must be carded. And the sale of flavored tobacco products is prohibited, as per the ordinance. The report also includes a discussion of youth-populated area policy option that was asked by Councilmembers, and Candell, at the last meeting. And it also includes a timeline of phasing, which is also available right behind you, of how the, or how the licensing process will phase and how the implementation will occur. I wanted to make a correction to the staff report under the youth-populated areas discussion. I mistakenly state that the open spaces are owned by EBMUD. I actually meant to say the East Bay Regional Park District. I want to clarify that. In regards of next steps, if the council intends to adopt the ordinance as it's presented, the second reading can be set for May 28 at the next council meeting. If the council intends to adopt youth-populated area buffer policy, staff would request council provide direction to how to define the youth policy, youth-populated area, and what is the preferred radius for the buffer. Staff would also need to take this matter to Planning Commission so that, before it's reintroduced to the council for adoption. I have maps that would include as a part of the staff report available, so I can project them out as well. And staff is here for questions, if you have any.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff on this? Councilmember Burke's.
So what's the, what's the fastest way to get this into law? I mean, we have to go back to, we have to go back to planning if we, can you repeat that again? What would trip us to go back to planning?
So as it's presented today, it does not include the youth-populated area policy option.
Okay.
If the council directs the staff that we want to include this policy and provision into the ordinance, we would have to take this to the Planning Commission and then have it reintroduced at the city council for adoption.
So if we were to say, and we, we talked on the phone today, just for transparency reasons, and thank you for the discussion. I think we, we focused on, you know, the 500-foot to 1,000-foot buffer around schools. I think we identified one retailer or storefront that sells cigarettes that's near a public school.
Yes.
So if we were to incorporate that into this policy, just that one, we'd have to kick it back to planning, and they'd have to review it, and then it would have to come back to us.
Yeah, I, the reason, I think, I know that other city councils have done it, just by city council adopting it, but at the recommendation of the city attorney, it is recommended that it's available in both the portions, as a zoning text amendment, as well as in our code, so that there is more thorough process and fewer chances of litigation in the future.
Okay.
I think the city attorney has.
Malacan.
I was just going to say, the buffering aspect is really more of a land use issue, and we haven't placed this part of the code in our land use section of our municipal code.
Okay.
That, that's really the rationale. We placed it more in the, in the, I think, business retail section. So it's that aspect that is causing it to go to planning, if you add the buffer.
Okay, understood. Is there a way we could carve that out? And then enact what the real purpose of this was when?
Add to it again?
I raised it a long time ago.
Yes, I think we could introduce tonight and potentially adopt it at your next May 28 meeting, and if you'd like us to, you know, proceed with the buffer language, we can, we can do that on a separate track.
Okay.
But it gets this.
Okay, great. And then my second question would be pertaining to, on page five of eight, the significant tobacco retailer, where it states, "Another option to limit availability of the tobacco products in the city is to include provisions restricting any new significant tobacco retailer." If we were to do that, would that also, that, that would also have to go back to planning? We could carve that out as well? Or would that, would that be similar to the buffer zone issue? Would we have to?
So in my understanding, the significant tobacco retailers does not apply specifically to the buffer zone, unless that's what the council wants to do. Typically, where the weight's crafted in changed labs, model ordinance, or other ordinances that I've seen, it's through the, throughout the city, saying that we, essentially, a provision that states that no new significant tobacco retailers will be given licenses in the city.
Okay.
Existing retailers are allowed to exist, and then certain other limitations, similar to the ones that YPA, a buffer, just provisions that City of Richmond, for example, has done, on the same page, the points under City of Richmond section. We could adopt, adopt similar language to incorporate, saying that if there's no lapse in judgment, you can't stay there. The business does not commit three or more violations. So it, we can craft that language to, to speak to that.
Okay, so if we were to incorporate this as a provision of what we're talking about tonight, we could move it forward to a second reading? We wouldn't have to.
Twenty-third.
On the 23rd. I'm seeing shaking heads. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate the, thank you.
Any other questions? Vice Mayor Candell?
I do. The, in a couple, there's a question that I did, I do try to pose you. A couple of areas, it just had tobacco products, and then other times it said tobacco products or tobacco paraphernalia, in terms of free samples and coupons, and then just a lot of, you know, around this whole ordinance. I'm, I'm assuming that, like, all of this relates to tobacco products and tobacco paraphernalia, like, like that's together? Like, there's no time you separate the two?
Yeah, there's actually no special separation, so there's not, like, laws that only apply to tobacco product and separately to tobacco paraphernalia, also because the definition of tobacco product already includes, essentially, tobacco paraphernalia under Point 3, it says, tobacco product includes any component, part, accessory intended for, intended or reasonably expected to be used with a tobacco product, whether or not sold separately, which encompasses essentially the definition of tobacco paraphernalia.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Sure.
All right. And also, with the penalties and, I remember seeing, and I'm sorry, that was because the website went down for the agenda. Joanne and I were talking about this, so I wasn't able to get, I didn't try other ways. How do these compare with other cities? Like, the penalties and terms of, you know, violations and stuff? Are we, are we on the easy side? Are we on the hard side? Are we in the middle?
I not necessarily have looked at all the cities in terms of what their penalty provisions are, but different, cities typically use their existing penalty provisions, administrative citations section of their code to, to sort of mirror penalty provisions for violations if a tobacco retailer, tobacco retailer does not have a license, and penalizing them for that. I think the stronger point about these provisions is that we, through, through the ordinance, we would not allow them to, it's not just a monetary fine, there is also the suspension of the license if it's an existing tobacco retailer. And in the case where tobacco retailer, where retailer sells tobacco without a license, they have to wait for 30 days or, or more, depending on how many violations they've done. So that the monetary aspect of not being able to sell is much higher than the, than the ones, than, than the ones that's limited, limited by, by monetary fines that we are allowed to do per the code. So that it, although it does look small.
Yes.
The effect of the combination of two is much larger.
And so you, I know you didn't look at it, did, any feeling for whether it might be below or about the same in terms of penalties?
I think we would be about the same on an average.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Geringer, any thoughts? Okay. Good. Good.
I like, I, I mean, just to pick up on what's already been asked, in terms of, no questions? But if we're moving to comment?
We want questions now. We'll have a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing.
Sure.
We're ready. So open the public hearing. I have two requests to speak. I assume we have more. And first is Danielle Gallagher, or Gallagher, and then Jimmy Rojas.
Danielle Gallagher, 1588 Silverdale Road. I'm, as I'm sure you are aware, but as a reminder, federal law bans flavors in cigarettes, excluding menthol, but not in other tobacco products, such as smokeless tobacco, cigars, flavored vape, and e-cigarettes. So why would Lafayette take, not take the next, next step to protect our youngest citizens and make a citywide ban for all of these flavors? These products come in an array of candy, fruit, dessert, and cocktail flavors, such as apple, grape, cherry, chocolate, strawberry, appletini, cotton candy, and even cinnamon roll. Flavored tobacco products are typically have bright, colorful packages, and are often sold individually and cheaply, making them even more appealing to youth and young adults. Research on national use patterns, perceptions, marketing, and even statements by our own superintendent of the Ocalanies Union High School District support that these products are targeting our youth. Tonight, children have been mentioned multiple times in public comments, whether it be safety, daycare, parks, overcrowding of schools. Please keep them and their health at the top of your priority when making your own decision and enact a citywide ban with no buffer zones. Our youth are everywhere, and we cannot afford to put boundaries or exceptions on this ordinance. We cannot allow the California State Code to define our youth-populated areas, since, once again, our youth are everywhere through Lafayette. Thank you.
Any questions for the speaker?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Jimmy Rojas, followed by Margot Connolly.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, first and foremost, thank you for the cake. I go through many council meetings throughout the state, and breaking bread is always important in engagement, no matter what the topic is.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Hyman Rojas with the National Association Tobacco Outlets. We represent retailers that sell tobacco products. We represent retailers that sell tobacco products throughout the United States. We do support the tobacco retail license for the city of Lafayette. It assists in additional retail compliance and education. In addition, adds another level of annual retailer compliance checks currently done by both the FDA and the state of California. But we do not support a ban on the sales of flavored tobacco products. It does nothing to harm law-abiding retailers, excuse me, does nothing but harm abiding retailers and does not reduce tobacco usage. Here are a few more reasons why this draft policy does not pertain to Lafayette. One, in the past three years, the FDA retailer sting operation has shown that 100% passing scores by Lafayette retailers. So the retailers are not the problem. Two, in 2018, the California Health Kids Survey, which most cities look at in comparisons to issues on tobacco and alcohol, exactly on page 43, shows that Acolares High School students who smoke report the following data. They show great cigarettes, grade seven, almost 0%. Grade nine, the same 0%. Grade 11, almost 0%. Smokeless tobacco, grade seven, 0%. Grade nine, 0%. Grade 11, 0%. E-cigs and vaping, 0% for grade seven, grade nine, 1%, and grade seven, 0%. Many of what was talked about in the previous speaker are mostly on-sale products. If most of you have seen a lot of the retailers here, they're limited to very small types of flavors, basic flavors. The high-end cherry or high-end unicorn, this and that, is mostly on-sale products that are being sold. Here are some of the unintended consequences this ban will bring. It will not reduce tobacco usage among youth and adults. Instead, shift buying habits of adults to neighboring cities. Lafayette will lose an estimated annual revenue of 500,000 sales tax, not including auxiliary sales like gas, water, and snacks. It punishes retailers who follow the laws in highly, in a highly regulated industry, who check ideas of customers and do not sell to youth. Retailers, on average, have been losing anywhere between 25% to 45% of their business. Let's move forward in adding tobacco retail license but not punishing law-abiding retailers. Let's continue funding anti-tobacco youth education and retailer compliance checks, with Lafayette's numbers show that these programs actually work. We hope you accept these suggested modifications. Thank you.
Any questions for the speaker?
Can you...
Okay, yes, Councilmember Geringer, we have a question.
So, when you were citing the statistics, or you were saying on-demand, or what was the small percentage? I didn't understand the terminology.
On, in regards to the California Health Survey?
Yeah, but you used a term, or...
On-sale.
On-sale.
Okay, thank you.
On-sale, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Margaux Connolly, followed by Jen Grand Leon. Someone's smiling. I must be doing a good job of murdering their name. Okay, that's good.
Good evening, my, good evening. I'm Margaux Connolly. I'm a volunteer for American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network. On behalf of ACS CAN, I'd like to thank this council for taking this epidemic very seriously. Thank you so much. Thank you for drafting such a strong ordinance. I'd like to commend Councilwoman Burks for acknowledging that the clock is ticking and we need to get the flavored tobacco product ordinance passed as quickly as possible. There's a danger that if we wait for the zoning part of it to go back to the Planning Commission and so on, that this could drag on for months. In the meantime, our kids are getting addicted, and more and more of our kids will end up dying of lung cancer and cardiovascular disease. The clock is ticking. Thank you again for taking this seriously. I can't thank you enough.
Okay, any questions? Thank you very much. Jen Grand Leon. I'm sorry, I know, you're gonna correct me. And then followed by Stella Witherspoon.
Oops, one second.
I've never seen your name fully explained. That's my, that's my excuse.
That's okay, that's okay, thank you.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson and council members. I'm Jen Grand Lahano from County Public Health, and I want to thank you for considering such a comprehensive policy to address this urgent issue of youth vaping. So as you heard at the last meeting where we, this was discussed in March, Ocalanis High School has a 30% current vaping use. And so that's reported vaping within the past 30 days from the California Healthy Kids Survey, as reported to us by the superintendent. Then that's among 11th graders, which is the highest we've seen, not only in Contra Costa, but in the entire Bay Area. To combat this issue, best practice supports regulating tobacco products in the way that you have in the ordinance before you. This is a sound policy supported by evidence, and here's some of that evidence. So we know that strong local tobacco retailer licensing has proven effective in reducing illegal tobacco sales to youth. You've also included defining e-cigarettes and vaping products as tobacco products. E-cigarettes largely do not help adults quit smoking. They do entice youth to start smoking. A new study just came out from Dartmouth that has found for every additional adult who quits smoking using e-cigarettes, there are 80 additional youth who initiate daily tobacco use through e-cigarettes. And 70% of adults who attempt to quit using e-cigarettes are unsuccessful and end up having dual use, so using e-cigarettes and smoking, which was worse than just smoking to start with. And then we also know that youth who vape are four times more likely to start smoking cigarettes later, one year later than youth who don't. You also have a citywide ban on the sale of flavored tobacco products. We know that four out of five young people who have ever used tobacco started with a flavored product. You also have tobacco-free pharmacies. Selling tobacco in pharmacies sends a mixed message to consumers about the dangers of tobacco products, makes it harder for smokers to quit, and is a conflict of interest for pharmacists. A 2014 survey showed that 2/3 of Americans would support a ban on the sales, on tobacco sales in pharmacies, including nearly half of smokers. You also have a policy prohibiting coupon redemption. The tobacco industry targets youth by keeping tobacco prices cheap, ensuring that the price of tobacco products remains high can reduce consumption by discouraging youth initiation, prompting quit attempts, and reducing average consumption among those who do continue to smoke. So, our priority is public health, but that doesn't mean that we're anti-business. We just don't support an industry that's in the business of selling a product that, when used as intended, will kill you. If you adopt just these provisions as drafted, leaving the zoning provisions for a later discussion, this may be the most important policy you could ever adopt to protect the youth of Lafayette. So, and our youth cannot wait. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the speaker?
Thank you.
Thank you. My last request to speak is Stella Witherspoon. If anyone else would like to speak, please fill out a speaker's list.
Hello. I'm not going to speak to the health issues, because I've done that at several other council meetings and at the joint school board council meeting, but just gonna talk about mobility of our students, especially our middle school students, who are, in many cases, going to school on their own devices, their own bicycles, their feet. Sometimes they're getting dropped off, but the reality is that after school, a lot of times they're walking. They're walking up to Mount Diablo. Some of them are going to the library to do their homework and study, but a lot of them are going to Starbucks, they're going to Jamba Juice, they're going to Noah's. And so they're mobile. They're more than, they're able to go much more than 500 feet, 1,000 feet. And so, a citywide ban is really what I think would be effective at limiting access to underage youth in Lafayette, access to these products, which I, everyone who's, who's speaking against or in favor of a FTP ban is telling you about the health effects, the negative health effects. So, really, I would advocate for a citywide ban. If a buffer were to be considered, then absolutely 100 or 1,000 feet. And I think the youth populated areas, I understand there's statute that defines what those are, but realistically, Lafayette is a strip city. We have really one major commercial boulevard and then a secondary if you count Maraga Road. We don't have a whole lot of different commercial zones, so the kids are gonna go to the one strip, which has a variety of businesses that they're interested in. They go to Taco Bell, they go to a number of other businesses that I mentioned already. Starbucks, in particular, Starbucks right down the, down the way there. In some of the buffer maps that you see, 500 feet doesn't cover that Starbucks. I have a picture, which I don't think I have time to show you, but it's of a, maybe I can. It's of a very enticing flavored product that Starbucks offered.
Oh, shit.
Okay. I took it just as a kind of lark, because I was walking by and they offered a, it doesn't come up, I'll tell you.
Awesome.
It says, "Exclusive Stanley Middle School Starburst Frapp Grande, 595. We love our Wildcats." So flavored product, not of tobacco, obviously, but just to point out that the kids are going to that location. They're not just hanging around the schools. So I really feel that you have to consider that. They're also more mobile than their feet. Maybe some of them are bicycling, but think about the new mobility. They're gonna have the electric scooters. They're gonna be zipping up from one end of Mount Diablo to the other, so, please, for the children. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Question for the speaker? Okay. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Do I have any interest in opening comments? Councilmember Burks?
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna make a motion, but I, I'll defer to you to call on Councilmember Bliss. I know he had comments to make...
Okay.
...beforehand, but I'd...
He's shaking his head. He's saying he's gonna make the motion. Why?
Yeah, well, I'd be happy to make the motion, but I'll, yeah. I was just gonna, I was just gonna make the comment, just affirming, you know, as we talked about earlier, that this is, I mean, not, I don't wanna repeat what I said last time. We had this issue before us, but, I mean, there's really, as I think we talked about on council and as one of the speakers tonight made reference to, there's really nothing we do, I think, as policymakers, that's more important than public safety. And within the broader realm of public safety, there's nothing more important than the safety and health of our kids, who can't protect themselves, so, in many cases. So I, as I've said before, I think, you know, I think this is a really important step for us to take as a city, and I would certainly support. What I was gonna speak to earlier was, in spirit, I really appreciated the comment from Councilman Burks about looking for how we could move as quickly as possible on this, including, as staff had pointed out, the possibility of taking back up the land use element of it as a separate item, but to get a ordinance on the books that bans flavored tobacco products as soon as possible.
Yes.
Okay.
I agree.
Well, I think the staff recommendation is to introduce the ordinance by title-only way, future reading, and continue the matter to May 28th, 2019 for second reading and adoption. Direct staff to establish the tobacco retailer license fee and draft resolution to adopt the fee, and direct staff to draft letters to encourage neighboring cities to consider regulating the sale of flavored tobacco products, and to support three pending bills at the state legislature that would help reduce access to back, to tobacco products to minors. So, Councilmember Burks?
Can I, can I just add one? I guess I'd, I'd like to make a motion supporting all of staff's recommendations in addition to one element, which would be to restrict any new significant tobacco retailers in the city of Lafayette. Would that be, I wasn't, I wasn't certain when I asked before, would that be, would that, would that kick this back to any, or would we have to reintroduce it for a first reading if we did, if we went that route right now?
Oh, sorry. So it would, it would, it would allow the existing 11, I can't remember if it's 11 or 13 retailers that exist, but no new retailer could obtain a permit?
Page, page five of eight on the, on the staff report, I believe it was.
Isn't that...
Down at the bottom.
Yes, you did. Good job.
Okay.
Doesn't happen very often.
That's something I would wanna look into. I would not recommend introducing that as part of the ordinance.
Okay, all right. So, I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and make the motion...
Staff recommendation.
Of staff recommendations minus what I said before, but, so I'm gonna make that motion. I would like to just say a couple of words, as I do. First of all, as I've said before, I do wanna, I do wanna credit Vice Mayor Candell for her leadership on this issue. As far back as, gosh, I don't know, like, over a year ago.
Yes.
She was shouting loudly before she was elected as a citizen, and she's done a phenomenal job in championing this. The second thing I would say is, when I was on that rocketship on Facebook, a lot, I would often say, this was, you know, the best day of my mayorship on several occasions. I'm not the mayor anymore, but I would certainly say that this is, this, if we do vote for it, this, this would be the best day, probably the proudest day that I've, I would have served on this city council, because what Councilmember Bliss said and represented in terms of protecting the health of our, of our youth, I don't think there's anything greater and more important than that. So I'm extremely proud and a bit emotional around that. And finally, I just would like to thank Kamal for, for her steadfast work in drafting something that is extraordinary in a short amount of time, and the staff behind her and the leadership behind her on the staff. You've all done a fantastic job. So with that, I'll make the motion for, of staff, staff's recommendations.
Oh, I enthusiastically second Councilmember Burks.
Excellent, okay. Any further discussion? Call the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. So we will see this back on May 28th for final reading. Okay, that brings us to downtown objective standards.
Thank you, Cam.
Thank you.
God, oh, thank you.
I'm like, oh, what, what was I saying? What? It was like, rounding down from, what, 100 or something?
She goes, look, they have a, they have a thing. He was like, they don't...
Fair.
They, they get this, of course. I mean, it's like, it's amazing. You're just, they're truly sponges for all this, you know?
Okay, when you're ready. Good evening.
Good evening. So I'm really excited to introduce the Phase One of Objective Standards. As you all know, you had directed staff in February of this year to break the objective standards, or creation of Objective Standards project into two phases and bring the Phase One back to you for consideration in May. So here we are. I would like to introduce Tom Ford from M Group, who is our consultant helping us, and I also want to give a shout out to Christina Sturm, who, Planning Commissioner and part of our subcommittee, who is here to support the project, ask questions, respond... of our subcommittee, who is here to support the project, ask questions, respond to questions, and with that, we're gonna go over the standards as you've put them together, and love your feedback this evening on them, and we'll continue the project to the 28th for us to make the changes that you recommend and prepare all the approval documents for a final review and approval. With that, Tom.
Just, I'm looking for a red light. Oh, no. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I've been working on this since December, so I kinda feel like I finally, Dorothy, finally getting to Oz here.
Welcome.
Getting to finally meet you, because I, we've gone through numerous rounds with the Planning Commission and DRC, so it's great to bring this piece of work to you. The way we did it in those groups, and if it works for you, I can do it the same way as, I'll allow you to read each one, but I can kind of describe the genesis of where the standard came from. They all came, they were all spurred by the design guidelines, but I can give you some, a little bit of feedback or background, and in some cases, I might even have like some anecdotal story about something a subcommittee member said or a planning commissioner added. What you see before you actually, just in terms of volume, I think it's, what, four pages? This actually started out as about two pages, and through that iterative process of taking it to the DRC and then going back to the committee, going to the planning commission, it kind of grew, and it didn't grow just in space and more digits and everything, it grew to be more complex and I think indicative of sort of the, the very multi-variety type of downtown that you have, and I think you're starting to see this in this phase one document. And I think you'll continue to see that in the phase two, because we've already had one subcommittee meeting to get back on track to phase two, we did that a week ago tonight, and we're moving forward. So, the way these are organized right now, if you see the underlined text, outdoor space in this case, the underlined text is actually a specific piece in the design guideline document. So all of these standards directly relate to a section, they're not one by one, so one standard isn't trying to actually execute one specific design guideline, but I put them into the sections where they belong. So this first piece, the outdoor space, 0S1, OS1, it's really trying to protect for, when a new residential or mixed-use residential project comes in, to really protect sort of the investment that's already been made by so many other properties in the downtown, in the public realm, and how open space, private open space relates to the, to the street or the sidewalk. What we have here, and this has been a case of really an evolving standard, this specific one, is four categories that a developer or a property owner would approach, any of these four, and assemble a series of points to get to a minimum of 25, and they have to make sure that they grab their points from a minimum of three of these sections. So what we tried to do is create a lot of options, so it wasn't just a mandatory, you gotta do this or you don't qualify, but create a, a variety of options, a palette of choice, design choices, so that somebody could really assemble not only an open space that would be valuable, but probably would look a lot different than the one next door if that developer followed these same standards. So that was really what we were trying to do here. Going on to the next one, and so I can, I can go through all of them and then we can take comment, or I can stop?
Why don't you just go ahead and go through all of them? I think we've all read them, but having you explain the basis is quite helpful.
The creeks, CL1, this, there was a lot of discussion in our, in our subcommittee about the value that the creeks not only give to the property, daylit creeks, the creeks that are, that are open, then you can see them, the value that they, aesthetic value, not just monetary value, but aesthetic value, that they give just not only to the properties directly abutting those creeks, but to people walking down the street who can look past a building and see that there's a creek there because there's a bunch of trees and we all know, you know, what a creek corridor is. So there's two components to this, there's the, the first bullet point that really talks about, it's kind of a no-brainer, we almost dropped it because as one of our committee members said, who wouldn't put windows overlooking a creek? But there might be a time when, because of the way they develop their program, the interior program, they don't, they wouldn't do it. So bullet point one really enforces getting the, the windows on the creek. And then bullet point two tries to find a way to establish that the side setbacks can be used so that you could stand, let's say, on Mount Diablo Boulevard or Lafayette Circle and see past the building and be able to have an unobstructed view of the creek corridor. So that's where CL1 is coming from. CL2 is, well, CL2 and CL3 are very similar, but they're just dealing with different development types, residential versus mixed-use, but it's basically establishing a minimum for a softscape landscaping that would be in the front setback and demanding a, a minimum number of trees that would be associated with that. These, these particular ordinances, we looked at some case studies in other communities, so for instance, an award-winning recently adopted plan in Belmont in their downtown pedestrian walking district uses this ratio, and we looked at it and kind of adopted it to create the, because people, the planning commission said, why one tree per 200, where do these numbers come from? So that's where they came from. And again, it's just to try to establish that there is a really nice frontage. Parking and circulation, the first one, motor vehicles. Right now, I believe it's just in the downtown district that the zoning code prohibits cars parking between the front of the building and the curb or the sidewalk, and what this does is it establishes it through all four downtown districts. Pardon me?
Go ahead.
This is just trying to establish that there be a minimum number of bikes or fixtures, bicycle parking fixtures that accommodate a certain number of bikes, and it's tied to the ratio of vehicles that are demanded of the development, and a maximum of that number would be in the front setback. So for instance, if a residential development came along and they had 20, now I have to do math in front of you, but let's say they had a certain number of cars and that meant they had to have a certain number of bikes, not all of them would be parked in the front, there's a maximum of that bicycle number that's allowed in the front, the rest of it's in the back. Now, what we did for a mixed-use project where people might be biking to the store, they don't live in that building, but they're coming to bike, we upped the ratio a little bit, and so that's why you see a little bit difference in the numbers there. The last part of the parking and circulation design guidelines deals with access, pedestrian access within a parking lot, so what we did is we set that at the number 15. Once a, once a parking lot or structure, any kind of parking facility, has a minimum of 15 parking spaces, it's mandatory that there be a pedestrian strip five foot wide that's able to connect the parking to the building, whether the entrance is behind the building or the entrance is to a sidewalk that goes around some other buildings and then gets to the building, but that there is that pedestrian connection. I think what you'll see, just as a side note, I think what you'll see in phase two is this will be expanded into talking about passeos between buildings, other ways of getting from that parking facility that's behind the building, because not everybody has a rear entry, but finding ways to get nice, safe, beautiful, if you will, vibrant walking, walkways between the parking and the building entrance. The next section is height and scale. So, here's another one that, that went through a lot of growth in the iterative process, including one of the DRC members was so enamored of the point system in the very first standard that I showed you, he suggested that we start to input it here for HS2 and HS3. Really what we're trying to do here is talk about the variety of what's happening, so if you're walking along a street frontage, that there is a complexity and a variety to the, to the public realm, to the experience, not only in height, so that every now and then the building has to change, or if the building next door and it's within a certain distance has a height that you have to study, you have to introduce some variety. And then the frontage, that there's some variety there. So in HS2 and HS3, which are basically the same except one of them is for a frontage and one of them's for a corner situation where you have a front on Mount Diablo Boulevard and you have a corner on a side street, that there's, it's taken care of on both sides, you don't just say, well, I did the front and the side is what it is. So that's, again, using a point system to add architectural complexity to that facade that's facing the public realm.
And what is Juliet?
She's Romeo's partner. No.
A Juliet.
I, I, I get really confused. It's like a balcony with no place to stand.
Yes. It's, it's a small balcony where you can like step out and just kinda see, but you really cannot...
It's really not a balcony.
It's a fake, okay, yeah, I've seen those.
Yeah, it's like a fake balcony.
But it's, it's an architectural flourish, if you will, that adds something to the space and, and could help to break it up.
I suspected that's what it was, I just wanted to check.
So, the last one is also, is in building design. This one sort of evolved, this one, this one was very complex, and again, it took some leads from the Belmont plan. The desire by the, by the subcommittee was to not have boxes, that you just didn't have a box and a box and a box. So the way that we started to try to regulate that would be that the second floor had a mandatory percentage drop-down of square footage, and that, that missing 5% or whatever it ends up being, needs to be taken out of one of the facades that the public can see. So it would be, so it'd be out of the front facade, or if it's a corner situation, it would be a corner facade. So that's basically where it came in. It's again, just trying to find ways that, so that people aren't just building boxes next to boxes, next to boxes, so. Anyway, that's all of them, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I'll just tell you, I'm very impressed with what's come out of this, and I know, Christina, you've been deeply involved in leading this charge, and this is great, and I guess the only question I had is, how soon can we get this in place so we can start using it?
So, we, I talked to Mala today, and we have like minor changes to the guidelines to be made, for example, for HS2 and HS3, we like to add kind of a dimension on the last bullet point, which, which talks about change in fenestration type and fenestration dimension, I think we need to kind of finesse it a little bit more to have some kind of a minimum dimension. And there are some other tweaky changes that we discussed in the language, but really, at your next meeting, we can bring approval documents, I've already created the addendum to the downtown specific plan EIR that goes along with the project, that's been reviewed by the attorney's office and ready to go, so I can create a resolution and bring it all back at the 28th meeting for adoption. I did want to add that at the phase two, staff does intend to take these standards and any of the standards that we come up with and take a block of the, of the boulevard and kind of apply those standards to it and come up with kind of a rough design to see how they play out in terms of numbers and what we get as a result, and that's kind of the best test for some of these numbers, and we might end up just finessing it some more to give it a little bit more meaning.
Okay.
That's the intention.
Sounds great. Okay, questions for staff?
Yeah, the PC1, the surface parking shall be prohibited in all front setback areas on lots with frontages on Mount Diablo Boulevard, and that's actually applying now to all of Lafayette, of the downtown? Or is that just the core, or is that, or is that intended to be East End as well?
This is, this is intended to apply to all multifamily, multifamily mixed-use projects in the downtown, so all districts, the way it is written right now.
Okay.
Or properties at front Mount Diablo.
So it's, it's just the multi-use new projects?
Multifamily.
If you don't, multifamily, okay.
Multifamily and multifamily mixed-use, yes.
Okay, so just for an example, the one that was up in front of us recently, the corporate terraces, that is a housing project, but it has this commercial thing in the front.
Yeah, this standard would apply to that.
It would apply, okay, but if it was a purely commercial...
If it was an office, if it was a, if it was a retail mixed-use building, which is retail in the bottom and offices on the second and third floor, this standard would, would not apply.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Councilmember Bliss?
Uh, no, no que, I mean, I, I'll wait for comments, but I mean, no questions, I wanna just echo your thanks to staff and the consultant and Christina, of course. I think I've been reporting back to council along the way that I've been attending as many of these subcommittee meetings as I, as I've been able to, where I didn't have conflicts, and I think that, so I'll hold till comments, but because I've had a chance to sort of watch this take shape, it's been, and again, to tip of the cap, it's been an incredible process to watch unfold, I don't have any questions at this point, but I'll follow up with some comments.
Is anyone who would like to speak from the audience on this? All right, well, I think we're ready for comments.
Okay, great. I mean, the one thing I'll just say is, the, you know, I'm really grateful for the amount of work that went into this. Having sat in on many of the subcommittee meetings, really just observing, maybe contributing an odd comment along the way, but really just watching it unfold, it, you know, they had a really tough challenge before them, even to get to this first stage of, of standards, especially I think, you know, on, on areas of the design guidelines like outdoor space that tend to be things that sort of describe the types of experience that a, that a space might evoke or the type of characteristics we wanna see in outdoor space on these sort of developments, but the way that they went to translate this into actual quantitative criteria and, and, I mean, it was, again, I was observing primarily, but just to listen to the way that they would actually attach weighted points to different amenities was really a huge amount of work. So I, I think that we, you know, as others have expressed, there's just, we owe a huge debt of gratitude to the consultant staff, Christina and other staff on putting this together, I mean, it's really, and, and I would also add, just, this was stipulated explicitly, but just to remind ourselves that we sort of asked them to do this phase one, phase two after they had sort of gotten rolling, and so they kind of picked that up and worked with it, and I think moved really quickly on this with a lot of review from the planning commission and the DRC. So I just wanted to just echo that thanks and just say, it's really an incredible product that's come out of this, so thank you.
Okay, other comments? All right, do I have any interest in a motion or? We should, I guess we're gonna continue the matter to May 28th, I need a, a motion?
A motion to continue till, to the next meeting with the edits as indicated by Pyle.
Second.
Very well done. Okay, any discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, it's unanimous. Well done, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Very, very well done. So, nothing removed from consent calendar, that brings us to council member reports on activities, consideration of matters, council member wishes to initiate for placement on a future agenda. Councilmember Geringer?
So I have a couple of things. One on the, and I...
One on the, and I started to mention it earlier, but didn't want to raise all kinds of blood pressure and red flags with the current, with the project that we were looking at. But at our city schools joint meeting, and then also as part of our city schools partnership Objective 3 discussions, we had talked about doing demographers study, considering doing a joint demographer's study, and I know we have our budget coming up, and we're presenting on May 28, the City Schools Partnership. But if it was the agreement of the council, I would like to have that come back, and I don't know if that involves us directing the inter-city manager to work with the superintendents to begin the process of how they would get RFPs or pick demographers to come back to begin that process. Because as we look at projects, as we did earlier, right now, our schools are not bursting at the seams, in spite of the fact that, you know, people seem to think that that's the case. And many of the fears in the past over developments have not come to fruition. We don't get the number of students out of those housing units or those projects that the fear would say we would. I think it is a good time for us to look at, as we move forward, what those real yields are, and so that there is plenty of time, if the numbers do start shifting, to really look at those infrastructure decisions. And so, I would love to have that, either have us direct staff or have it come back. I guess Mala would say, we have to have it come back and look at it, but...
Well, this is the opportunity to ask that it be on the agenda.
Yes.
So maybe that's the request.
Yeah. Add a future one, so.
Well, let staff put that on the agenda when it makes sense, hopefully soon, so we can get into next budget cycle.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then I, so that was the ask, and then, just a couple of things on the CCTA and on a couple of the meetings that I attended this last month, as, and I'm sure, part of it is, do you give these reports, or do you assume everybody sees these things? Because I think a lot of us do, so I'll be brief. But the CCTA is looking at a transportation expenditure plan, and because our former mayor doesn't really understand, I think, the concept of, you know, retiring, they approved a letter agreement with Don Tatsin to, for only expenses, because he wouldn't accept any of, any of the money or per diems, but to support the development of the work plan and moving forward with the expenditure plan. And all of this, of course, is gearing up to begin to do a measure, and looking at how to fund all of these fabulous things. But speaking of funding, CCTA was also awarded an $8 million US Department of Treasury grant. It's a dollar-for-dollar match, and, good news, the AAA who's working with them on Gomentum, the autonomous vehicle testbed, is helping to fund part of that match. And the rest of the world calls it mobility on demand, well, not the rest of the world, a lot of people. It's the shared mobility system or apps, so it's mobility as a service. And so what CCTA is going to do is, over the next year, they will be using those funds to do the projects on the 680 corridor, because that's one of their priorities, is innovate 680 and to help get that moving. The, the, the second year, they will move that out into Contra Costa, and then into the rest of the nine Bay areas. And the mobility on demand is basically, it's being done in Finland and WIM, but it's app, basically, you have one app that helps you pay for your Uber, helps you call your bus. It's all about the mode shift and getting everybody out of their cars, and it's very exciting, as Randy Iwasaki says, that his, the little, our little Contra Costa Transportation Authority, the little pea shooter agency, was the only group to get one in California, and actually, that size group to get one in the country. And so, they're very innovative. And then the demographers study. And then, we did hear from the CCTA's legislative person about the SB1 and the governor's, the ma, the vice, the Councilmember Burks had brought up at the last meeting, the McCarty Bill, and I think it's AB 1568, but that was going to try and tie SB funds to housing requirements. And the housing, basically, he's changing that, based on all of the opposition, to potentially be used to cover, if you apply for grants. So if you apply for state grants, they could, if the bill makes it through the legislature, tie those grant applications to, one of the criteria could be where you are in your housing element, and doing that. There was some discussion, the advocate or the lobbyist, Mark, said that there's some discussion in the governor's office of potentially looking at something like that, so not a complete...
Complete, yeah.
Yeah, you don't get this if you hammer, if you will, but having some sort of requirements. So, anyway, so that was those, and that is that.
Okay. Vice Mayor Candell?
Yes, like we spoke about earlier, I'd like to add, bringing back to somehow get a new vision of our jobs-housing balance in terms of all of these projects that are coming in recently. Take another look at that, and look at our downtown core. I'd love to include the East End, West End, and the zoning in there. I don't know if we can expand this to take a look at the housing element, but bring, bring it back with, you know, everything that has changed.
So, just to, since we've had a conversation earlier today, just the understanding of what the growing number of housing projects would do to our currently almost-perfect jobs-housing balance of close to 1.
Of 1.0, right.
And what we can do to continue to preserve some, the jobs in Lafayette, because they seem to be being replaced by housing. You want an assessment. We bring back some ideas, and then, based on your feedback, we can plug it either into the general plan update, or bring it forward as you desire.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and I would just indicate that, you know, time may be of the essence when it comes to having a good effect on what we see occurring, because I think the way we've got things set up now, we're going to see more of the kind of proposals that we're seeing with corporate terrorists popping up rather quickly. So, it may be something we want to move on even before the general plan amendment process, because, I mean, I'm just surprised corporate terrorists is going as quickly as it is. And it's a going concern with plenty of people occupying, you know, office space, and suddenly now, the owner wants to just flip it, so...
It's a whole new ballgame.
It's a whole new ballgame. So, we may need to really accelerate this.
Got it.
Okay.
So, may I ask a clarifying question? So, as part of that, I also spoke with Narup earlier today, and about concern about jobs, and someone addressed it during the public comment. So as part of this whole process, it'll come back to us with the numbers about how many we've lost, and that kind of, to get to that balance.
Right. That would be...
So, there'll be background on that?
Yes.
And my understa, just to pick up on that, I think that's a great question and an important frame. And I think, the way I think about the project, I know we're not talking about that project at this point on the agenda, but it's really appropriate to both these comments, which is, I think it'll be valuable as we go forward in the process on that particular application, to make sure that we're underscoring for the public a point that was made in the staff report, which is that there are findings that we have to review.
Maybe we should, I'd prefer to keep this a more global discussion, as opposed to...
100%.
Yeah, so let me, let me, with that in mind, rephrase it this way, which is, as we get these projects, and so I entirely agree with going forward on that analysis, and as part of that, in parallel to that, as we get projects, whatever they might be, that come before us, we're always being asked to make findings that speak to the health and well-being of the city, and it's incumbent, I think it's incumbent upon us as a council to make sure that economic vitality and local jobs are a part of that broader umbrella of the findings we have to make. So I just wanted to make just...
That might be the quickest route to where we want to go, actually, so...
If we can do that, that would be terrific.
Okay, great. Okay, other items? Councilmember Burks?
Just, just two. One, maybe an update on the city manager hiring process. Not tonight, but since it's not agendized, something agendized in the future, maybe just a consent item memo on where things stand. The second piece is, perhaps, an agenda item to discuss, maybe consent memo on the state of the staff and the recent losses, and what it's going to do in terms of the trade-offs it might result in. We're asking a lot of you all. We've asked a lot tonight, and with the two recent planning staff member departures, I mean, it doesn't seem like there's anybody left. I mean, it seems like it's, and it's really difficult, so I think the public deserves maybe a snapshot of what bench strength we have.
Okay. Councilmember Bliss, anything else?
Not a separate item, but I just want to add to, if I may, add something, kind of as an open question, as part of Council, Councilmember Geringer's point about the demography study, which is just to, I don't know if this, this is kind of something to make part of the agenda item if, when it comes back to us, but I, if I recall correctly in talking to Dr. Whitmore at the joint meeting with the school board, and he was talking about these demography studies that we could do in partnership with them, in addition to giving us sort of a snapshot of where things stand right now in terms of population, child population, vis-à-vis our capacity, I seem to recall him saying that there are ways to do these studies now, so you can use them as an actual, a very rigorous baseline, which any snapshot would give you, but a baseline that then allows you to understand over, say, like a five-year horizon, what specific development decisions that we actually make, how those impact the school population. So, it might be worth, as part of that, item when it comes back to us, maybe some outreach to the superintendent about that point that he had made to us as a possibility, because I think that, as a snapshot, it would be valuable in and of itself, but to then give the council a decision-making tool, so that five years later, we can do a look back and say, you know, "We approved these types of developments and had these impacts on school census," I think could be a valuable add-on to that, or just a piece of that study. So I just wanted to add that to the mix, if that's viable.
Okay. All right. So with that, we'll move on to council assignments for 2019. And I have a proposal for assignments for 2019, and I think this is our one opportunity to talk, if there's a desire to trade, or something's different, or you want something the way, done another way, this is a great time to do it, because we can't do it any other time. So, do I have any opening statements? Yes, Councilmember Geringer?
I would like to, first of all, thank you for your, you know, thoughtful effort at balancing all of the assignments, and I appreciate the process. The mayor and I did talk a little bit earlier this morning about kind of his process for doing that, and I appreciate the, making sure that, you know, all of us are getting our leadership training and all of the things, and being involved in those areas where it gets us up to speed. There was one area that I did feel very strongly about staying on, and that was in the area of, with SWAT, LPMC and LFFA, and I see that it was switched over to Vice Mayor Candell, and I just, you know, really think with the continuity of the year, getting into the, we're now into May, that I bring a lot to that, and have already had that kind of learning curve, if you will, at getting in with those, with the particular people. I also, based on my past experience before coming on the council and working on a regional basis with CCTA and with other regional transportation and the people, mayors and others, both in CCTA and in the SWAT, that I have that kind of background and knowledge already in those relationships, to help be able to get those, to keep things moving forward and to represent Lafayette on that. The other piece of it is that as the CCTA commissioner, you also serve on the Administration and Planning Subcommittee, that meets on the first Thursday morning at 8:30 a.m. And so I just, you know, wanted to throw out also that, in addition to, that I just feel a strong passion for that, to, to hope that, you know, maybe we would possibly switch that. I seem to recall there was a conflict that Vice Mayor Candell had on that morning. So, basically, those were the only ones. The A-Bag, I also feel very strongly on A-Bag, but one of the differences between CCTA, which I also was switched off of, to move you on to, and then to move Councilmember Bliss over to that, is that as voting delegates, we have not met yet. On June 6th is the first time that A-Bag, that, that we as, you know, whoever our representative is from Lafayette, will be engaged and will be part of the meeting. And so, there's not that same continuity. I haven't, you know, I've been following along and all of that, but not the same kind of continuity. So, I just will obviously go along with the mayor's recommendations if, you know, Vice Mayor Candell, you feel very strongly about staying on that, but I think there's some reasons to switch that for continuity in the transportation area.
So, we're talking about SWAT?
SWAT, LPMC and LFFA.
Okay. And let me just clarify, go ahead.
Which, yeah, which then, because of the rotation of the earth, SWAT, when you are on SWAT and you're that primary representative on SWAT, you are also then, this go-around, the commissioner on CCTA.
Okay, so where it says CCTA, I have Don Tatsin.
That's actually CCCTA, has to do with the Contra Costa County Connection bus.
Okay, so that's okay.
That is not the same thing.
That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about something else. All right. See? I don't really know what I'm doing.
No, I don't think that's the case at all.
To help me.
I think that you, you know, you used a very sound...
I just used yellow, and I figured, what the heck? Okay. So, Vice Mayor Candell, is that something you could consider switching out?
I, I understand everything that you're saying, and I totally agree there is a continuity loss on that one. I do feel like I, I, that seems like a, I tried to do the CCCTA, and I couldn't, and I felt very badly about that. And I looked at the duties of this other effort, and it does seem I can make that one happen. And I'd love to be involved with transportation on a regional level. I think that is where my strengths, my training, you know, my background, everything, it's just, it compels me to think that I would be a very good representative, in terms, especially the technical aspects of it. And I, so I really would like to, to do it. The A-Bag, I have no problem if you want to switch those, and be the first rep on that one. I'm not, that, that one, those one, I actually don't, either one is fine.
So, could I make a suggestion?
Yeah. I would, if I...
If I may?
Yes.
So, I think the issue here is that I didn't recognize Councilmember Geringer's existing kind of relationship with SWAT.
Right.
Okay. So what if we make her the primary, make you the secondary, and we send Stephen off somewhere?
I, I mean, but I do have some background with James Hinkamp, and I've been on transportation, and so it's not like I'm not...
No, I'm not, I'm not questioning whether you have a connection. I'm just saying that, for example, Recycle Smart or Solid Waste Authority...
Right.
Is something that Teresa's been now going to the meetings, I've been going to the meeting, we're both kind of engaged. It would be difficult to trade someone out for that. Now, I'm assuming this is similar with SWAT and CCTA. So just, for continuity's sake, it might be easier if we just did this year.
And then, and then switch in November?
That's right, because we're going to reorganize all over again.
Would, I guess, would that be okay with you, to switch in November?
My idea would be that...
I would be open to considering it, because the new mayor gets to, or as we reorganize. And so I think it's that December meeting, and then we kick off in January. And I think the, and I would want to double-check, but I think some of the assumptions on these are that they're two-year cycles, but we can, yeah, they'll take whoever they get.
They're going to take whoever they can get.
I was just going to say, they'll take whoever they get.
So just to clarify, then, we're going to reorganize again in the next cycle, so we're talking about the balance of this year. So, my suggestion would be we allow Councilmember Geringer to finish this year as the primary, and make you secondary. Is that acceptable to you?
I'd prefer to get... I'd prefer to get started, but...
But would it work?
I suppose so if, if there is some sort of thought that, then it wouldn't even be more of a disruption at the end of November, right? And that was, that's a clarification, that if it's a two-year cycle and I'm going to be even more disruptive then than now, then that's a tough one.
What do you think?
I agree. I mean, there is a concern that there would be a disruption there as well. But, and I think the, sort of the same arguments apply. I do think that I have the value added there, and I appreciate your engineering background and all of those things, but it was when Mayor Burks was the one who was making the assignments, it was one of the high priorities that I had, you know, coming in and, you know, do very much. But I would say that if it's a compromise to get us to November-December decision point, that we could evaluate it again at that time. And the mayor at that time, vice mayor, whatever, gets to, the mayor gets to make that decision at that time as well. And the other continuity on here is that the way that this all worked out, we were both left on transportation and circulation.
Right.
And so I think the whole plan provides that continuity, and we had changed that. And thank you, councilmember Bliss, for, you know, being willing to be moving around in there, but we had changed that at that time, too, so that there was a common thread.
Okay. Well, I think there's going to be a lot of opportunities in your next four years on the council to experience a whole lot of different commissions. I think that when I put this together, I certainly made the vice mayor's choices a priority. I do want to make sure that there is continuity where we have already started a process with other regional entities. I would really hope that you could accept, Vice Mayor Candell, the alternate position on SWAT for at least the rest of this cycle, and then we reanalyze it at the beginning of the next cycle.
Would it be okay to find out if there is, if this is a two-year spot?
I...
And it would be more disruptive then? And so I just want to, I just want to make sure, right? That doesn't...
Yeah, I mean, I can find that out, and we can bring this back. There's a meeting of the authority on Wednesday night.
Okay.
And so, assuming that we can do the research and everything, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. So the question is whether or not it's considered a two-year term...
Right.
Correct.
By SWAT?
Correct. And, yeah, and, yes.
Okay. So with that, we don't have a final assignment list. How about other concerns on the list? Are there any others? Vice mayor's fine.
I'm fine.
Councilmember Geringer's fine. Got heads nodding over here. Okay. So, why don't we do this? Why don't we have the modification that includes everything except for SWAT for now? And then we'll find out what the situation with SWAT, we'll make a decision hopefully at the next meeting. Okay? So we have new assignments now for everything except for SWAT.
Thank you.
Believe SWAT the way it is, which I believe is Geringer as lead. And are you, you're the secondary, right? Or?
No.
Even Bliss has been.
Right. All right.
But why don't we wait, and Teresa will still go, right?
She's still going to go.
Right, yeah.
We're just not going to touch it now. We'll leave it that way.
Right.
We'll find out more, and then we'll have another discussion.
Perfect, yes.
Thank you very much.
Excellent, all right.
Thank you for your consideration.
So do I have a motion that reflects that unusual but important variation?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, it's unanimous? I'm getting head nods from the city clerk. That's always a good sign.
Well done.
Okay. And with that, we are on to appoint one member to the planning commission. We do not have an appointment for the planning commission at this point. We're going to leave the position open and look for more candidates, but we're not ready to say no to anyone either. So we just would like to have more to choose from. So I think the message back to our candidates is that we're going to hold it open a little longer, but there's no, no one's been taken off the list at this point. Okay? And then we're on to emergency wildfire preparedness, objective one. Nice job, by the way.
You guys won the race.
It was a race. It kind of feels like more of a marathon than a sprint. It's all good.
Rocket boosters are still engaged.
What? Thank you.
The thing I want to say, just as a preparatory note to this item, is, you know, this is, we've talked in terms of these various goals and objectives about the value that we have and the value that we place in our commissions and committees, and the expertise that we have on our commissions and committees. And I don't want to jump into us talking about the actual plan, but it was just, the process was one that, you know, I knew going into it what sort of expertise we have on the emergency preparedness commission. I knew that going into it. But to watch them deliberate over this plan and weigh in and just really understand in a much deeper way how true it is that we just have, we just have an embarrassment of riches in the city in terms of expertise and commitment on the issues that we as a city have to grapple with. So that's not getting into the actual meter, but I just want to say that upfront. I don't know if Vice Mayor Candell would want to...
I hadn't had nearly as much exposure. If you'd had any exposure, I had not had any, and so I was blown away. Absolutely so happily surprised with everything that is being done. We are in really good hands. So just with this, I don't know how to go through it. I think what I am going to just go through, because it's long and we don't need to go through it, but the expanded mission statement in those three items pretty much is, gives us the template of what we want to do this year. And it's things that we discussed, and Chief Ben was on board and the commission was on board. And so basically, the three things are, is, basically, you know, emergency, the wildfire is 100%. We just need to focus on that. That was, those are just the words, but the items two and three are, are points that we want to push on this year. And the first one is that get everybody to sign up for the CWS alerts. And I didn't even know about them. Most people don't. There was a concept, maybe that we were going to put, you know, a little, you know how they have the little money, the money, the thermometer thing in there? But maybe it could be like a candle, and it's like, you know, big wildfire, but then when it goes down, when, it's like a little baby candle at the top, when everybody's signed up for their alerts or something, I don't know. Just some push to try to get the word out, and hopefully Jeffrey can, you know, help with that. I think we're going to do sign-ups at Art and Wine and at the Safety Fair and, and really get the word out about this one. It's a big deal, and people don't know about it that much, and we really need to get the word out. The other one is to try to come up with some wording and some phrases to get people to really talk to their neighbors, right? That is, in an evacuation, in a disaster, it's the biggest deal of all, is you know your neighbors and you're walking over to your house. Like Chief, Chief, you had it the best. What is it, the puddle, was it the puddle theory or some, what was it? Pebble in the pond. Right? Where you get yourself taken care of, and then you reach out both sides. And to somehow get these two messages out to our community this year, those would be our, how we can track it. What's that? You're just excited. A public comment? Come on.
Earl Permatay, 529 McBride.
Sure.
Lifelong learning.
We need you to speak into the microphone, because we can't get you on the record. Still don't hear you.
Heard it.
There it is.
It's on now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
So Earl Permatay, 529 McBride Drive, Upper, thank you, Upper Burton Valley. Lifelong learning, student as a civil engineer. This is actually a very interesting action you're taking. Last summer, we had an assembly woman candidate come to the two cul-de-sacs, and the whole community met. I'd say probably 50 people. And she's now been elected assembly woman. Now, that was a very important action. I had the photographs from the new NOAA satellite showing the Santa Rosa Fire, and the computer created a photograph that showed the risk of fire right where I was standing. It had a color system. I have the, I'll give you a copy.
Yeah, please.
And it's, at that time, it was Huntsville Canyon. Now, the other thing was, the word emergency, there's, I grew up at Michael Lane, so I know Lucas Drive. We have two gates now. We had a gate at the top because we have two boundaries. We have a boundary. At the top of the hill, the ridge, is Walnut Creek. Rossmore. Now, Rossmore Dollar Ranch was designed by a highly competent engineer. It has its own fire station, and it knows about how to manage the ground. So if you ever get it, you should all actually get the opportunity to go there and drive up to the ridge, and you'll see the understory of the land is manicured. And there's always these arguments about that, because that's an ecology problem. And I've taken photos of it all. But the road comes up to the top to a substation. There's an electrical substation at the top. No one can really see it from either side. And there's a gate, and that road is fire safe. Then you cross into the Lucas Ranch. And now there's another gate, and that, if you ever go up there and look at that gate, I don't know what position it's in all the time, but it's a truck-required knockdown. Now, I worked in the U.S. Geological Survey as a student, and I learned how difficult in California you went between federal land, private land, federal.
So we really do need you to conclude.
Okay, the conclusion here is, is that the assembly woman can get the boundary such that those gates can be opened.
In an emergency, right? Yes.
Yeah, and who's going to do it?
Ben, do you have?
I have to review that. Fire Department has access, somebody needs to have access to others. Instead, if somebody does part of our review, there are local areas, identify what gates exist for outlets, ensuring that Fire, you have the capability with ability to access those appropriately.
Yeah, you got Snake Hill Road. You've got Burton Valley School. You got the families. You got to get the kids out. You know, in the morning, the traffic just going to Walnut Creek is tight.
It is, yes.
So that's, if they could get out that way, up Lucas, they can go right into Rossmore. It's not a problem, and they'd be able to just drive right out.
Thank you. We will, Ben, he will make sure that all, all of the gates, probably not just that one, but all of the gates, because there's a bunch. There's a lot of gates, totally fair. Thank you for bringing it up.
Okay. So I thought this was a great model for the other objectives.
Thank you.
So I wanted to give kudos out for the work done on this, and we'll see what comes from the other efforts, but this is, this is a leader.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just pick up, just a really brief comment, pick up on something? In terms of this, the goal for getting people signed up for the CWS, for the emergency notification, what we were trying to do with thinking about the target for that was really something concrete and specific and doable and easy to understand. What we're trying to shoot for is 30% of households to be signed up for. Right now, we're like 14%. So the idea was to basically double the percentage. So I think, I think the point that Vice Mayor Candell made about really tracking it, and I would even go so far as to say we should sort of acknowledge and celebrate it when we do hit that goal, I think will be valuable. But I think also, a lot, one of the, one of the goals for these objectives and goals that we're putting together is to think about what does it mean for council? Like what can, you know, what does it mean for our work? So I would just like us to kind of, in the back of our minds, always be thinking about are there things that we can be doing, just as add-ons to other stuff we're already doing in terms of outreach and community engagement, to find strategic ways to lift up that, that goal and that ask for people, because it really is critical that we get people signed up for it.
So can I, can we work with Jeffrey? Is that would be a possibility out of this? And create some sort of message that goes out with him?
Perfectly, yeah.
Have Jeff talk to Ben.
Great.
Okay.
And come, come up with a strategy so that he can run that by you.
That's perfect, yeah.
Yeah.
Because one of the things that the strategy lays out to the commission and to the chief's credit is that there's already all these community events...
Oh, yeah.
Literally dozens of things they're doing to get the word out. So I think having that coordination between the chief and Jeff would be a great way to move forward on it.
Sure.
Thanks.
Yes.
If you're...
Speaking out of turn, but with Jeff, we're going to start advertising this Friday. The resident's guide is being put in the mail by our printer.
Right.
So hopefully, the next week, they'll start popping up. We're doing a coordinated effort on their informational release with Jeff and with Steve Hill from On Fire, he's a GIO, and with Chief Winneker. So part of that message is also CWS is being pushed to that first informational release, so make that apparent.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Burks, you had a...
Yeah, I did, just to follow up on councilmember Bliss, you know, when I, when I kind of thought of this in the beginning of the year, I, you know, certainly, this is great. This is a great example, great first model. And I thought so mostly because you identified three, really two...
Really two.
Very, you know, simple, low-hanging fruit, not simple, but low-hanging fruit, attainable goals. And this does not, never in my mind, would represent kind of a one-and-done, here's the paper, everybody, you know, that's it. You know, it should be an evergreen kind of constant flow, and you guys have set really good, I think, attainable goals, especially on the CWS registration, there's a plan there. And then in terms of connecting neighbors, you know, there's, there's some solutions there that I think that, you know, those of us that have taken on these objectives and goals, we can continue to work on. But I just wanted to emphasize the not, the one-and-done kind of...
Oh, right.
Kind of deal.
This is just right now.
This is just the beginning.
Yeah.
And, and you really did a, did a fantastic job. You utilized the commission in particular, and our professionals and our staff really, really well, some dedicated folks, and I know motivated them to be involved in this, and I just commend both of you.
Ditto, yeah.
Ditto is good.
That's what I wrote after I finished reading it. Great job. And then I did say, you know, minimal, you had the minimal cost to the city, and so it was like, yeah, great job, and no real additional budget asks, question mark, and yeah, so...
They have it covered.
Great job, yeah.
All right. Well, I read it, and I went on CWS immediately, so I...
Nice.
Come on.
One down.
That's right.
We're signed up, but I need to double check. Michael.
Okay. So with that, we are basically through our open session.
You have a recommendation that says direct staff?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion?
I'll, are we moving, are we moving the, the objective? Is that what we're doing?
Moving objective, and, oh...
Oh, yeah. I would be, I would be happy to make a, make the motion to, to implement the objective as city council policy, and to move forward with the action items and the strategies that are implemented or integrated into the plan.
Second.
And there's a second? Any discussion? Okay, we'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, it's unanimous?
Yay, wonder.
So with that, we'll move to our second closed session of the evening.
And this chocolate cake is still alive.
I can smell it, it's still there.